Go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Bloomington City Council on this Monday, June the ninth. If you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence to follow, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. I'd also like to make reference to Councilmember John Dannenberger, who just recently lost his brother, so we could take just a moment of silence in reflection, in honor, and sympathy for John and his family at this time. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call for attendance, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
And then I need to ask for a motion to allow Councilmember Sheila Motney to call in remotely if that motion would be made.
Yes, due to work reasons, please.
Okay.
I'll move that Councilmember Motney be allowed to join remotely for work.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Mosley.
All right, Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
And Councilmember Motney, can you hear us?
I can, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving along the agenda, at this point, there is a proclamation that is going to be presented by Alderman Cody Hendricks. So Alderman, at this time, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to make a proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Bloomington, whereas the city of Bloomington recognizes the rich diversity of its residents and is committed to fostering a welcoming, inclusive, and equitable community for all people. And whereas LGBTQ+ individuals have historically faced discrimination, violence, and marginalizations, yet have made countless contributions to our city, state, and nation in every sector of society, including education, business, government, the arts, and public service. And whereas, Pride Month is celebrated nationally in June to commemorate the Stonewall uprising of 1969, a pivotal moment in the movement for LGBTQ+ rights and a reminder of the ongoing struggle of justice, dignity, and equal treatment under the law. And whereas, the city of Bloomington is proud to stand in solidarity with LGBTQ+ community, recognizing the importance of affirming the identities, lives, and experience of LGBTQ+ individuals, and promoting their health, safety, and well-being. And whereas, the city council reaffirms its commitment to creating a city where all residents, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are valued, respected, and have equal access to opportunities and protections. And whereas, inclusive communities are stronger communities, and fostering a culture of belonging benefits everyone who lives, works, and visits in Bloomington.
Now, therefore, I, Dan Brady, the mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Bloomington. During this month, the city celebrates and honors the history, culture, and contributions of LGBTQ residents and allies, and that the city encourages residents, business, and organizations to reflect on ways that can support equality and inclusion for LGBTQ individuals. And the city leadership will continue working to ensure policies and practices reflect Bloomington's commitment to being a safe, welcoming, and affirming city for all. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to presentations or recognition of the life-saving award recipients from the Bloomington Fire Department and the police departments of life-saving awards. And at this time, I'm going to ask Chief Matheny from the Fire Department to come forward and make those acknowledgements for us. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'll go ahead and read the names of the individuals who are being recognized this evening. And if they'll please stand, or maybe they're already standing behind me. If you're not, you can please join us also. But I will read their names, and then Chief Matheny will speak on behalf of the events. The police department is recognizing Officer Ronald Fryman, Officer Jacob Shepherd. The fire department is recognizing firefighter John Koponey, firefighter Cody Cheeseman, firefighter Trey Conley, firefighter Vernon Dickey, firefighter Mark Pitser, firefighter Derek Stevens, firefighter Kyle Teeman, firefighter Cody Tyner, engineer Eric Purchase, engineer Shane Stork, EMS supervisor Derek Rorden, Captain Eric Hall, and Captain Jason Kornuski. Thank you.
Good evening.
Chief Matheny, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, elected officials, and also the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly tonight. We're here to recognize some outstanding individuals, professionals from both the police and the fire department. These people put themselves on the line every day, and they go on many different types of calls from traumatic injuries, cardiac arrest, overdoses, and other high-stake calls that the police department has to deal with every day. Their direct actions and two incidents that were recognized tonight actually led to the survival of two patients, and we're very fortunate to have these caliber of individuals that work for us. The two incidents that are involved, it shows both ends of the extreme that we go on. So one incident involved an infant, a newborn, that was experiencing some distress, and the other one was a 50-year-old that had recently had some cardiac issues. In both cases, our police and fire worked together seamlessly to have an immediate effect on the patient and a great outcome for them to live another day and have another chance at life. These moments remind us, you know, what this work is really about, being there when every second counts, and stepping up to the plate when our citizens deserve and need us the most. On behalf of the Bloomington Fire Department and our brothers and sisters in law enforcement, I'd like to thank the council and the community for their continued support that makes our work and these guys' jobs and Cal's jobs so much easier, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. And at this point, if we could have all the firefighters that are being honored to maybe walk across in front of us here, so we could give you a recognition, a handshake, a fist bump, a high five, or whatever is appropriate. But please do, we would like to say thank you. Also, ladies and gentlemen, for the firefighters and family and officers, we had pictures earlier, so that has all been done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you all. And at this point, we're going to move on in our agenda, and I believe we have public comment. And Madam Clerk, if you could go ahead and please recognize the agenda for public comment.
I will. All right, so this evening, we received a lot of emailed public comments since the packet went out. I'm going to read a long list of names for the record. These are emailed public comments that were provided to council prior to the meeting, so bear with me. Kim Ryburn, Jerry Klinkner, Mary Kay Robbins, Lynn Grabner-Bratke, Carolyn Whining, Barbara Brumlevy, Matt Burgess, Kathleen Wieland, Michelle Fitzgerald, Kathy Fulton, Deej Troyer, Rob Wall, Vicky Schultz, Rick McLean, Jackie Schmidt, Becca Berry, Mike McLean, Margaret McLean, Merrick McLean, Dan Comas, Amber Bunner, Wendy Klinkner, Amanda Nagel, Misty Leifte, Jeannie Turbit, Beth Buford, Betty Brewer, Amber Coth, Darcy Kuiper, Michelle White, Erica Hartman, Gloria Stephen, Karen Conrad, Scott Larson, Laura Gibson, Vicky Connell, Beth Wall, Kathy Jenke, Melanie Dockery, Miles McLean, Marie Meskaman, Renelle Hartless, Jody Hagberg, Rose Stork, Cindy Termindy, Andy McLean, and Crystal Abel. And registered to speak in person, you have 10 individuals. After you say your statement, we will start with Zach Gitrich, and then proceed with Tracy Myers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. For those that are going to be speaking here in person this evening, the purpose of public comment is to hear your opinion. The council will not respond, and if there's actions on behalf of those in attendance that's not appropriate, we will ask council for advice of how to move forward if we need to stop those comments. So mutual respect. We'll get us through the comments, and your voice will be heard. First up, if you just state your name. Okay.
Hello, there we go. Zach Gitrich, to the most esteemed mayor and city council members, I want to thank you for your proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. The current Trump administration has issued an all-out assault on queer, transgender, nonconforming, and intersex individuals, bypassing absurd, anti-scientific executive orders about sex and gender, attempting to ban gender-affirming care for adolescents, and denying people access to legal documentation with proper gender markers, which places people in danger, both domestically and internationally. Of course, this was only possible thanks to President Biden and the Democrats' complete and total failure to pass legislation guaranteeing federal protections for queer, trans, and intersex individuals, despite having a majority in both houses of Congress for two years. Thankfully, in Illinois, we have some of the strongest protections for queer, trans, and intersex people. In 2015, the state passed a law banning conversion therapy for minors. The Illinois Human Rights Act protects people from discrimination because of their sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation, and this includes discrimination in healthcare. In January 2023, the Patient and Provider Protection Act was passed, protecting individuals seeking sanctuary from out-of-state prosecution and explicitly prohibiting all Illinois law enforcement agencies from knowingly making or participating in the arrest or extradition of an individual pursuant to an out-of-state arrest warrant based on another state's laws against gender-affirming healthcare in Illinois. This act also guaranteed that gender-affirming care is a right of all people, both cis and trans, that they have access to. Furthermore, the Patient and Provider Protection Act protects healthcare professionals providing gender-affirming healthcare and persons seeking or receiving care or assisting another individual who is seeking or receiving care in the state of Illinois from attempts to impose criminal punishment, civil liability, administrative penalties, or professional sanctions based on the laws of other states when gender-affirming healthcare is lawful in the state of Illinois and meets standards for good professional practice. I encourage this council and all municipalities to loudly and proudly affirm their support for these protections and to actively educate our community about these protections. Finally, we must continue to educate public officials and healthcare providers about the unique healthcare needs queer, trans, and intersex individuals face. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder, if I didn't say in my comments, that each individual will have three minutes, and so thank you very much for your comments. Next, please, Madam Clerk.
And next up is Tracy Myers, and to follow will be Brian Fitzgerald.
Hello, my name is Tracy Myers, and I own a local business here in town called The Olive Bin. We are located in Normal, Illinois, right now at College Avenue, and we were in Bloomington for four years. Prior to that, we've been in Normal for eight years. And next door to us, for several years, it's closed now thankfully, was an illicit sex spa. And so I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote yes on that ordinance to try to shut these down. They were located right next door to us for a couple of years, and I witnessed, we witnessed, my employees and I, a lot of very strange and questionable things that happened outside our building and heard within our building. I want you to know that I was always concerned mainly for the young girls that I knew were being held there. They actually lived there. You would see them carrying in groceries. You see them in the morning out in the bathrobe, carrying out their trash. The door to the spa was actually locked, and so in order to receive a service, you had to ring a doorbell. And so I never saw a woman enter the spa for a service, always men. And they would normally park down the parking lot a little bit or out to the street. They didn't pull up right in front of the door, but all my customers pull up right to the front door because they want to get right in to get their oil and vinegar. I was afraid for my young employees. I have some young women and men from age 17 to 25, college, high school students who work for me. And during that time when that was located there, I did not feel safe letting them be I did not feel safe letting them be in the store alone. If you Googled the cellphone number that was in the window of the spa, it took you to a website called Peoria webpage that listed all kinds of sexual acts that you could have performed and how much cost, the cost, et cetera. You could just Google the cellphone number, and that would come up. So I just want you to know that it was a very, I'm very proud of Axel Jimenez, who is our land, our building owner. Once he took ownership of the building, he worked very hard to get it raided and get the girls out. And again, my heart is for the people who are being human trafficked, sex trafficked in our country, and I do not want to have this in Bloomington-Normal. As I said, I run a legitimate business, and I have for 27 years, actually, in Bloomington-Normal. I had an auditing business before the one I own right now. Let me look and make sure I didn't miss anything else. Oh, yeah, we also saw people would actually use the back door sometimes, too, which that seems pretty questionable when you're a massage parlor as well. I asked our building owner at the time and the building manager when they opened, who they did not support me trying to get it to be closed. And I said, can you imagine if your daughter was one of the women in there being held and being forced to perform sexual acts on strangers and people who came in? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next?
Next up, we have Brian Fitzgerald. And then to follow will be Erica Hartman.
Good evening. My name is Brian Fitzgerald, and I too own a business here in Bloomington-Normal. I own Bloomington-Normal Massage Therapy. Next year will be 10 years in that business. I've owned other businesses here in town prior to that. I've also worked in law enforcement, and I've worked for US Labor. I don't own an illicit business. I own a legitimate business. And I'm really concerned about this for many reasons. First of all, we seem to be lumped in with sex workers. Nothing against them. It's the business that I run is therapeutic massage. It has nothing to do with sex. It has to do with healing. And so my concerns are, first of all, that we're grouped in such a way in this ordinance. And I'm very concerned about that as well as we were never consulted as professionals. I feel like this is an inclusive community. We've heard a proclamation today, but we didn't hear with this ordinance any kind of inclusion. When I look at it, on the face of it, there's no connection with local business. And I feel like that's a mistake, and I hope the city will do something about that because I feel like the professionals in this room want to see that changed. As I said, I run a therapeutic massage business, and I have somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 customers a year. I could call any of them today. They'd be happy to speak to you about the legitimacy of my business and how it's helped them. I hope that you can see beyond some of the challenges that the young lady that came up a minute ago spoke about. Obviously, I had no place or no love for anyone who's abusing or trafficking, whether they be labor or sex in this community, and I think that's abhorrent. But I think to put those of us who are in healthcare helping people in that same category, quite frankly, is disrespectful. I also am concerned about the fees. I run a small business in town. A whole other set of fees that we're looking at. Again, without any input on that, I would really like to have a voice when it comes to how much more I have to shell out per year for another fee. I already pay the state. I already do continuing education. And it does concern me that we're thinking about adding additional fees. Obviously, if there's some safeguards we need in place, there's going to be some cost. But I would like to be part of that discussion and not just informed when the decision's made. I guess that's, for the most part, that's what I have to say. I have respect for this body, and I hope they have respect for the community that really helps from a therapeutic massage standpoint. And I hope you listen to our voices tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian. Next?
Next up, we have Erica Hartman. And then to follow will be Saranya Malanasmi.
Good evening. My name is Erica Hartman. I am a licensed massage therapist and have been practicing in Bloomington for 15 years. As any small business owner will tell you, today's economy is hard. Rising costs on virtually everything make it difficult to keep up. In the last two years, my rent has increased, my credit card processing fees have gone up, and my supply costs have nearly doubled. But those costs are all part of running my business. What should not be part of running my business are special licensing and investigation fees for criminal activities that have nothing to do with me. I already pay to be licensed by the state. I also pay for 25 hours of the continuing education, also mandated by the state. And beginning last year, I had to pay for a mandatory course on human trafficking. All of this is mandated by the state to ensure that our business operates within the law. And yet, none of this seems to be enough. From my perspective, this proposed ordinance punishes those of us who are already abiding by the law, and it perpetuates the false and outdated notion that massage therapy is linked to illegal sex work. As a Bloomington resident and as a mom, as a mom of two kids who go to BHS, I'm invested in the safety of our community. I know human trafficking is real, and I support your efforts to find the criminals who run these operations. But I fail to understand how charging my legitimate business an additional 350-plus a year will prevent human trafficking in our city. Human trafficking can be hidden behind any kind of business. Targeting massage therapists in Bloomington specifically is unjust and unfair. So I respectfully request that the cost of your pursuit of human traffickers come from your budget, not mine. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Erica. Next?
Right, next up is Saranya Palanasmi. And to follow will be Michelle White.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Saranya Palanisami. And I'm a Bloomington resident for 15 years, and I'm here to request lighting for pickleball courts at Rolling Brook Park to improve the safety and accessibility for players of the community. The pickleball courts are heavily used, but without lighting, they are unusable in the evenings. This limits access for many residents, especially in many cases like summer heat. Daytime temperatures often make playing pickleball uncomfortable and unsafe, pushing players to need only access in the evening hours. Working residents, many can only play after work, and especially in the evenings. Safety lighting would reduce the risk of injury and deter vandalism at the courts. Please consider adding lights to the pickleball courts at the Rolling Brook Park to support our growing pickleball community and make the park more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Michelle White. And then to follow will be Christina Felkner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city board members. I'm writing, well, I wrote earlier, but I was speaking tonight as a 15-year licensed massage therapist in Bloomington. I am expressing my concern for you to oppose the preceded ordinance that would impose additional licensing fees for legitimate licensed massage therapists. Massage therapy is a legitimate, medical, recognized healthcare profession. Therapists are rigorously trained, Illinois State certified, and committing to improving the health through pain management, rehabilitation, stress reduction, and overall wellness to our clients. To categorize and financially burden this profession in a similar manner as illegal sex workers is not only unjust, it perpetuates and damages stereotypes that we have worked hard to overcome. It misrepresents the nature of our work. Sex therapy or sex work is illegal in Illinois and should not be placed in the same category as massage therapy. This fee structure is especially troubling because it undermines our efforts to maintain the highest ethical and professional standards. It places undue financial burden on small healthcare-focused businesses that comply with extensive regulatory requirements through the state and licensing obligations. We follow the law. We uphold moral and ethical standards, take costly continuing education every year, and renew our licenses, just like other healthcare professionals in this state. I urge you to focus your efforts on investigating the establishments being run outside of the law and stop the trafficking going on in our community. To do this, there has to be a solid distinction between the two types of practices. If you have any further questions, I would be happy to have further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Christina Felkner. And then to follow will be Melanie Dockery.
Good evening, council members. My name is Christina Felker. I'm a licensed massage therapist and wellness provider here in our community. I'm here to speak not just for myself, but for the many ethical licensed therapists who are being unfairly impacted by a proposed fee meant to address problems that we're not causing. Let me be clear. We are regulated by the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. We are required to complete continuing education, carry insurance, uphold strict professional standards, including mandatory sex trafficking education every license renewal cycle. We are doing our part. We follow the rules. But not every place calling itself a massage business is doing the same. And you know this. The city knows which establishments are engaging in illicit services. To pretend otherwise is turning a blind eye, imposing blanket fees on all of us while doing little to shut down the real problem. It's not just misguided, it's offensive. This is a profession that heals, that helps people manage pain. Sorry. It helps them recover from injuries and reconnect with their health. And yet, many of us have had to lock our doors, install cameras, and stand up for one another when approached by individuals expecting sex under the guise of massage. We get berated. We get harassed. And now we're asked to pay more simply for doing it all the right way. If this is truly about stopping sex trafficking, then let's widen the lens. Trafficking does not only happen in illicit massage parlors. What about the hotels that look the other way? The gas stations, the truck stops? Rental properties where the exploitation happens? If the city wants to create meaningful change, enforcement must be targeted and honest, not punitive towards licensed professionals who are already under regulation and scrutiny. I am proud of the work I do. I stand with others in my profession who want to be part of the solution. But punishing the ones who follow the rules while allowing others to thrive, that's not justice. Please don't create more barriers for those of us who are trying to make a difference. Focus on shutting down the real problem. Stand with us, but not against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we have Melanie Dockery. And then to follow, Mary Ann Schultz.
I want to start off by thanking all the commenters so far and all my colleagues in licensed massage therapy that are talking about what we face in massage therapy, how this ordinance would affect us, how we are licensed for the state, how we go through training, and how we ourselves have to guard against predators coming into our offices. What I wanted to focus on is some of the wording in the current ordinance and what it means to be a massage business or a licensed massage therapist in the state of Illinois. I started reading the city ordinance and the Illinois Massage Therapy Act to see if the wording that is put through in the current, the local ordinance aligns with state law. What I found was in the city's ordinance, if you look in Chapter 22, Section 176, there's a non-applicability in the article for monitoring massage businesses or massage establishments, as the city has currently been calling it. And the article says this. "This article shall not apply to hospitals, nursing homes, sanitarium, or persons holding an unrevoked certificate to practice the healing arts under the laws of the state of Illinois." So who is the city of Bloomington giving licenses to practice massage to that are not already licensed with the state of Illinois? And what I ask is that this ordinance is be tabled for this moment to revisit the language that is in our state laws, that is in the local ordinance, and call in professionals in the massage field that have been working on this for years. I know the American, the American Massage Therapy Association reached out to the city to say today, to say the same thing. Please table this. Talk to us. Let us train you and help you with this. Because we all want, we want the human trafficking stopped. It's for the safety of everyone, for those of us working in the field legitimately, It's for the safety of everyone, for those of us working in the field legitimately, those that have been pulled into these horrible businesses, people that have seen it around the community. So please, take a breath and look at the wording that's currently in your ordinance, what you are suggesting, and what the law of the state of Illinois says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mary Ann Schultz, and then our last speaker will be Kathy Fulton.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I have been a licensed massage therapist in this area for over 10 years. So what that means is, I went to school for the entire time I should, I passed all of the school tests that I should, then I passed national boards, just like your doctors you go to see, or your dentists, IDPHFR, that website, that is also where you'll find my license that I received and that I keep going. I go to my continuing education courses every two years, and now additionally, the ones that Pritzker brought on for human trafficking. We are doing this, we're going through this. This separation needs to happen, and it needs to happen now. Excuse me. So back to my timeline, when I got back from school, I came to Illinois, I graduated in North Carolina, and when I came down to follow all of the rules that I was supposed to, to go down and get my DBA, I was pretty proud to do so. I found out that the little area that I, whatever the comment or section that I got to be a part of was called massage parlor. Seriously? And this was 10 years ago, we should, we should have been past that at that point, but we should be definitely past that at this point, that you're calling all of these workers that are, we all get to be doing business as a massage parlor, completely outdated language. That's got to stop. I don't remember which one of you was that it said, that you said it, but that's absolutely true. To be, to have that on my wall is even kind of disgusting to me, that I have to put that up. I want to be listed as what I provide. I watched the video from the last meeting, because I don't get the chance to be at all of them, and it was Nancy Bolinger who stated that there are 14 such illicit establishments. Well, if we know there are these 14 illicit establishments, why are they still going? I work right down the street from the Olive Bin, and I actually have places between the Olive Bin and ICE, multiple places that I could tell you are illegal. There's many ways you can figure this out, even by your own wording, like you're, you in Bloomington, or in Bloomington, you cannot have a massage establishment open after 10:00 PM. If you're driving around and you see one open after 10:00 PM and you see the lights on in there, guess what? It's probably not supposed to be there. We already pay tax money for the people that are supposed to go and shut these places down. I'm not sure if the person that owns the Olive Bin, how many times, or who you called, if you called Bloomington to try and get those resources that we are already paying tax money for, to try and come do something or try and help these women, but please remember that these are two separate entities, massage therapy and illicit sex work, completely different things. Thank you for your time.
And our last speaker is Kathy Fulton.
Kathy?
I'm Kathy Fulton. I have learned a lot by listening to all the people that came before me, because they answered a lot of questions that I had. I wondered, did they have to be licensed? I assume that they did, and so I wonder, like, some of them, how are they taxed? And where, where do you receive tax money from them? And do they have the proper licenses? And I, I would like you to support looking into all of these illegal facilities and disband them. I don't know if you have to tax, put another tax in somewhere to pay for that, but out of the kindness of your hearts for humanity, you are, you should feel compelled to do something for these people that are held captive in your area. And I wish that you would all pray on that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers?
There's no further public comment.
Okay. Thank you all. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Are there any members that have an item that they wish to have polled from the consent agenda, or comments thereof? Okay. I'll move to approve.
I'll stick to it.
Yeah, motion to approve. Member Hendricks makes motion seconded by member Ward. Clerk, if you go ahead and...
We'll vote electronically.
Yes. Go ahead and take the vote.
They're voting right now electronically. And Councilmember Montney, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and there were no nays to announce.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move to the agenda items for this evening, the regular agenda, and I'd ask our city manager, Jeff Jurgens, to start with item A8.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Darren Wolf to come up to the podium. Darren helps lead our dispatch for the city of Bloomington and for the police department. This item is related to some new software and some new technology that they are wanting to employ at the dispatch center, and I'll let him speak to the details, but just want to say what a great service that our dispatch does provide, and what a great leader we have in Darren Wolf, and a great asset for the city of Bloomington with the work that he does at our dispatch center. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Darren.
Good evening, Mr. Jurgens, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this important project for public safety. This, as Mr. Jurgens said, this involves public safety software that is used day to day in our 911 center here at the city. It's the same platform that we've relied on for nearly two decades in public safety. It supports our 911 dispatch center, police department, fire department, and any EMS operations throughout the city. I'm going to walk you through what the system is today, how we use it, and what this proposal means. So, the system was first purchased in 2005, when we entered into a partnership with Tyler Enterprise Public Safety to become the CAD provider, or the computer-aided dispatch provider, for the city of Bloomington. It is the backbone and the nerve center of our 911 center. Every 911 call received in our community and non-emergency call in our community is used to, this system is used to process that call. Our public safety dispatchers use this system to gather information, determine the appropriate response, and send police, fire, and EMS to emergencies and non-emergencies throughout our city. It's also the system that we use in the field for our police officers and firefighters to track real-time incident information. They have a large variety of devices, whether it's a tablet, iPad, a cellphone, where they receive this real-time information about incidents that are occurring throughout the city, so they use that on a daily basis. But the system does go far beyond non-emergency calls as well, or emergency calls as well, and goes into non-emergency calls as well. As the numbers say on the screen there, we processed over 85,000 calls last year using this software in the system. It's not all emergencies, it's the non-emergency events that people throughout the community encounter on a daily basis that may need police or fire resources. We also use it to, after hours, to track our public works and water emergencies that happen after hours. We track the incidents in there so we can get ahold of those departments as needed. We use it to track animal control calls as well and other services throughout the city. It's deeply ingrained in what we do in public safety at the police department. It supports electronic ticketing for Illinois uniform traffic citations. It supports written warnings for motorist violations, ordinance violations of city code, traffic crash reporting. It's also connected to our body worn camera system. And the fire department, it is intertwined with our patient care reporting system and our fire incident reporting system, along with various other systems throughout the public safety network of the city. And we use the data in this system daily. We use it to report on what we're doing as a public safety agencies, how long we're taking to respond to those incidents. We use it for internal reporting, budgeting, staffing, transparency issues. In short, this system is just deeply woven into our fabric of our public safety. How we operate today, currently, the system has been maintained since 2005 in a traditional software sense. We've had a standard software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies since 2005 that we renew on a periodic basis, and what that means is Tyler supports the software, but the city information technology department, they are the ones that have supported the infrastructure, the servers, the network storage, the backup, the system security, has all been provided onsite by our information technology department. And over the course of that two decades, we have updated it several times, where we're currently working in the on-premise cloud that the information technology department provides, but they are responsible for keeping the system current, up to date, and Tyler supports the software. The setup has served us well for quite a few years. However, we are approaching a point in time now where it's time for a new server migration, because some of our servers are reaching a point where we need to get them updated to maintain compliance. So with the change, this is why we're proposing moving to a software-as-a-service agreement, which, if you can go to the next slide, what we're proposing tonight is to go from a standard software maintenance agreement into a software-as-a-service agreement with Tyler Technologies. In turn, what that means is the system really stays the same, but we're not going to change what our firefighters and our police officers are using in our dispatchers. What we're going to change is the environment in which it's managed. We're going to take the burden of managing that system away from our information technology department and put it with Tyler Technologies, and they are going to host that in a secure cloud environment, which the city has been a trend over the last couple of years, within the last three or four years, Munis ERP, our financial software, which is also a Tyler product, has been transitioned to the cloud as well. Image Trend, which the fire department uses for patient care reporting and fire reporting, it's also in the cloud. So that's why our proposal tonight is to take our computer-aided dispatch network into the Tyler-managed cloud as well. I mean, it is a system that's supported by Amazon Gov, Web Services GovCloud, which is specifically built for government and public safety. Tyler will take over the responsibility of managing the infrastructure, the backups, the disaster recovery plans, software updates, and system security. The city, we retain full ownership of all the system and the data, that does not change, and it is a fully compliant system. This agreement also is going to have a separate environment for live operations, testing, training, allowing us to do more training with our staff offline. And then the next slide, sort of talk about what the benefits we're seeing of the system are. The first one is going to be resiliency. Moving to a software-as-a-service system, we're not tied to a single building, a single server, or a single power source. If we have a hardware failure, or a local outage, or a disaster, our system can keep running, because it's hosted in the cloud. That's essential for us in 911 and first responder community, is that we maintain operations. The second is going to be cybersecurity. Public safety systems are increasingly being targeted by ransomware and cyber attacks. In the last few years, cities across the United States have seen an increase in service disruptions due to those type of attacks. Tyler cloud-hosted system is going to include built-in protections for us, for real-time monitoring, encryption, firewalls, antivirus, and security controls. Those are all going to be maintained at a level that's very difficult and expensive for us to do locally, so that's the second reason that we're looking and proposing to do this. The third is for staffing and support. Our information technology department has a lot of work to do, and this is something that's going to ease the burden on them. One less thing they have to do is manage the public safety network. To put it in perspective, this net, this system is ran by 18 different servers that all have to have some type of responsibility to keep those maintained, updated, and secure. This proposal shifts that from our local information technology department to Tyler Technologies in the cloud. And then fourth and long-term is sustainability. This move positions us to adapt and scale as technology evolves. With software-as-a-service, we're able to seamlessly get updates and enhancements with little to no downtime, which is big for our first responders. Our responders could leave one day, a system update take place overnight, come in the next day and have an updated system on the latest technology. So those are the main reasons we're looking forward to this project, and we'd be glad to answer any questions anybody may have.
Are there questions from members of the council? Thank you very much, Darren. Member Lee?
Yeah, so I fully support this, because going to the cloud makes sense. I also know the costs associated with maintaining an on-prem system. How much of a cost savings are we looking at in terms of maintaining an on-prem system, which can get expensive, versus going to the cloud? Is there a cost-benefit analysis that's been done?
Sure. So, thank you for the question. Craig McBeth, Director of IT for the city of Bloomington. It's a very difficult question to really pin down as a direct cost savings, but what I can say is we've done some cost-benefit analysis on the average cost for our current VM environment, which is a virtual machine environment. We have, as Darren mentioned, there's 18 servers that are virtualized in that environment today. Based on our current system of six primary ESX servers that run that environment, the storage attached, the licensing that it takes, we average about $3,500 per year per VM. So this is looking at about a 63%, $63,000 offset in savings that we can now take those resources and use for other systems instead of this upgrade.
Thank you.
Any other members? Remember Mosley?
I do, Craig, and I can talk to you about this all day. So I have a question in this cost estimate as well, or this proposal, does that include the migration one? And then, second, as you kind of disable and disband your on-prem environment, is that cost included in that? Do we account for that, or will that be additional overhead?
So I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think the cost for the migration services are included in the cost, and it's the first-year cost, I think it's $75,000. And then to your second question about the cost to, you know, disable or decommission those servers, that is not included in this cost, but I would say that that cost is relatively minimal compared to the cost of this system. Certainly, they are VMs, so it is as simple as making sure that data is fully migrated and tested, and then we can fully complete the records disposal request and decommission those servers fairly easily.
Thank you.
Other members? Member Lee?
One more question. You mentioned disaster recovery. Being in the EMS system, we'd want significant uptime. So compared to the current disaster recovery system and the proposed SAS solution, what's, what is the improvement that we'll see in the reliability of the system going to the SAS solution? I assume it'll be much better in terms of uptime and in case of a disaster, will the city be in charge of that disaster recovery plan, or is that Tyler Technologies?
So, we do work in partnership with Tyler, at least our experience with Tyler ERP or Tyler Munis, which we went to a couple of years ago, as Darren mentioned. So they work with us very closely on that disaster recovery plan. The contract actually stipulates a 24-hour recovery point objective and a recovery time objective, which is for us to get to that point today, and I won't give you specifics of where I feel we are as far as an RPO or RTO, but we're not there, I guarantee you that. And the cost to get there, as Darren mentioned, is extremely high. So having a system that can leverage that economy of scale at the cloud level, we're able to get that benefit, and that is a huge benefit for moving to the cloud.
Thank you.
Any other members? Questions? We got a couple. First off, it says three years, and then, Mr. Manager, are they back before us at the end of the three-year cycle, the contract, or potential renewal, or is it reviewed at that time, or what happens?
I believe it would have to be renewed at that time, so this just covers the first three years, but I'd look to Darren to clarify that.
That is correct. This proposal's for a three-year agreement that would take us through this fiscal year and the next two fiscal years. After that, it would be up for renewal or, and, you know, look at it again.
And it's solely for the city of Bloomington, is that correct?
That's correct.
There's no interoperability with Metcom?
We do currently have a project underway with Metcom. They are on a different CAD system, and we do have a interface in development that will link both of those CADs together. That is part of their CAD project. It is in process now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clerk, if you take the record?
I was just going to ask if we can double-check with Councilmember Montney to make sure she didn't have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
I'll motion to approve, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Member Strausen.
All right, we'll vote electronically. Is that Mosley, actually, that did the second? Okay, all right, just one double-check, thank you.
We're both mics.
Two mics, too quick. Toss-up.
And Councilmember Montney, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, there are no nays to announce.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for the report. Next?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, with regard to the agenda item on the human trafficking and the massage establishments. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and for all of the emails and all of the public comment. We, as staff, have been working on various human trafficking issues since 2023. I believe that was the first time we started to get trained on these issues, and we have, to some degree, I would say, probably have had blinders on, trying to work through some of these issues and try and get ahead of some of these issues. And so part of closing one of the loopholes was working on a framework for massage establishments. And again, the people that came here tonight and talked, those are the good actors, and those are delivering needed great services to our community. But we need a framework in place so that we can stop those who are not acting in good faith, or are bad actors. What the ordinance does tonight is establish that framework. As part of that, we, as staff, I think, in the buck stops with me, did not have enough engagement with some of the massage establishments, and I know there's been some discussion today about some of the fees may be too high, working through some of the other issues, maybe separating a couple of things. So I think in our zealacy to get to some of the, you know, get a better framework in place to close down some of the establishments that are not acting in good faith, this ordinance was prepared, and I'm going to let our clerk and our corporation counsel go over some of the details of this, but I just want to say, I do appreciate, and we do hear you, and we do hear your concerns. I think there are ways to address them, but want to say, one, how much we appreciate everybody coming out on this. I think we all want the same thing, and I think we can get there, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, Leslie Yocum.
Thank you. I, too, wanted to just begin by giving compliments to all the legitimate massage establishments in our community. We see you doing the right thing, working to improve the health of our residents and doing it in an upright and commendable manner. We appreciate you. I also wanted to address quickly why the two proposed ordinances were presented in one ordinance. It was not to offend anyone or categorize you with something that you didn't want to be, but for two reasons. One, it's standard practice from the city clerk department to bring forward licensing edits in one ordinance when we bring them. Both the proposed codes are very old, they date back to 1975, and needed to be aligned with modern-day practices that we had addressed in the fall of '23 and in '24. Also, we wanted to further differentiate these two licenses. We did that by adding a definition of massage or body works establishments within the sexually-oriented business chapter. So additionally, that separated them and made them clear that we do not consider them one and the same, nor are we treating them that way. That said, to just jump to the code edits that are proposed, if approved, they will do the following. They will require all massage and body works establishments to apply for a license. Again, language today requires only massage establishments and does not include body works, which is some of those illicit businesses that we're working with and have later been, since a couple of years ago, been added into the state legislation. We also recognize the tremendous work and effort and continued education required to become a state-licensed massage therapist, and because of that, look to remove the requirement in the code that currently exists for massage therapists to be licensed. So if you are a licensed massage therapist with the state, that individual will no longer be required to have a permit as required by the current code. We are focusing solely on massage establishments. We also cleaned up antiquated language, ensuring sanity and safe conditions in the establishments, and added additional language empowering the city manager under emergency conditions to suspend or revoke a license if safety or health becomes an issue. This, too, mimics our vehicle for higher language. Lastly, we align the application processes, licensing cycles, appeals language... appeals language, fees, and other items to align with other city licenses, ensuring efficient processing. Again, happy to answer some questions. I know Chris has some things that he might add, too, but we are looking to remove the requirement of individual massage therapists to be licensed and focus solely on the massage establishments. And unfortunately, it's difficult to differentiate between legitimate and illegitimate establishments without imposing additional regulation. This is accomplished by having all establishments providing massage or body work services to maintain a license in order to empower our enforcement regulation of the illegitimate ones. We must look at them all. This also protects legitimate businesses by prohibiting customers from patronizing illegal businesses, redirecting them to legitimate providers, and confirming that only legitimate businesses will be issued a license from the city of Bloomington. That said, we are committed to trying to make the process easy and feasible as possible in assisting all those who apply with great customer service focus.
Thank you. Chris, do you have a comment from legal?
Much of this stems from difficulty in enforcing the law against illegitimate businesses. And much of the literature that you find across the board points to strengthening your code, local codes, as a way of helping attack these illegal businesses. Just so statistically, in May 29th of 2025, to give you an idea of what they're looking at, 150 law enforcement agencies came together across 19 different states in a coordinated 24-hour strike. 19 states, 150 law enforcement officers, and they arrested 46 suspects. They entered 26 suspected illicit massage businesses. And part of that problem is because they don't have the adequate ways of identifying where the illicit businesses are from a legal standpoint and going in and shutting them down. There's an article from the Human Trafficking Institute that says this. "This criminal enterprise is replete with the factors that allow for a thriving industry to profit from widespread commercial sexual exploitation and labor exploitation of women. Some examples include..." And third on the list is exploitation in gaps in state and local regulatory and ordinance structures. So what we're trying to do with these changes is close that gap and make it harder for these illicit businesses to operate. And as Leslie pointed out, the way to do that is you have to have a regulation that applies to all massage therapists, the setting the standards, not massage therapists, excuse me, massage businesses, so that when one comes along that doesn't comply, it gives you the tools then to shut those businesses down. And some of the advantages, some of the things that we were trying to accomplish through the changes is a stronger regulation and licensing helps ensure only qualified legitimate businesses operate. Background checks help block individuals who have a history in trafficking from opening up these businesses. Regular inspections allows the inspectors to go in and look for signs of trafficking. And without them, without these regulations, it's harder to have that happen. Clear operating standards limits high-risk practices like opaque windows and late-night hours or cash-only operations. By putting that in the code, it gives us a tool to go after people who are not, or businesses, excuse me, who are not complying with those regulations. Improved record keeping is another way to make sure that we police this correctly and have the authority in the code to do that. Collaboration with law enforcement and other governmental units, and then fewer opportunities for exploitation. So we think by imposing this code and requiring all massage establishments to be licensed in the city, we can then make sure that the legitimate businesses are protected and the illegitimate businesses are driven out of town or into the pokey, for lack of a better word. There's a lot of literature out there, too, that talks about how these enhanced regulatory schemes, while it may be hard to see now, and certainly when they're looking at paying additional license fees, actually benefit the legitimate businesses as well by driving customers, by eliminating a source for customers. If they want to go get a massage now, if they're really looking for a massage, they're forced to go to a legitimate business as opposed to maybe wandering into an illegitimate business. So that's the intention of the code. That's the intention of the changes to the code. Glad to answer any questions.
The last thing I was gonna add is that we worked alongside Peoria, Chatham, Springfield, and other municipalities to align our code that we're bringing forward as well, and tried to learn from things that they've had. Some of them have already had this implemented earlier.
If I might, Mayor, Peoria, Springfield, Decatur, Chatham all have these regulations in place. Peoria's had them in place since about 2018 or '19. And I believe it was, it was Decatur just passed them in March. East Peoria also has similar regulations. The wording, the requirements, if you're going to be a licensed massage therapist enterprise in any of those communities, you have to be licensed with the city.
Sorry, and one other thing I thought about was just that this is already in our code right now. Massage establishments are required to be licensed. We've not been enforcing it because for some time we were preempted at the state level, and that's now been cleaned up. And so this is just a practice of moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Members of the council, questions? Member Ward?
Yeah, I have a question. I wonder if I could get a show of hands from all those who are in favor of sex trafficking? I didn't think so. I categorically am not in favor of sex trafficking. I also am not in favor of punishing, slandering, and disrespecting people who are legitimate business owners in our community. And I do not believe that, as it's currently proposed and as it's currently, the current process that brought this resolution in front of us addresses the issue of sex trafficking, and it does punish disrespect and slander those who are legitimate business owners. How does it punish them? It punishes them by increasing their fees for not doing anything wrong. It disrespects them by lumping together two categorically unrelated types of activity that clearly is offensive to treat healthcare professionals in line with an image that they have been trying forever to fight against. It undermines that, and that's disrespectful. It's... This is the wrong way to go. It slanders them by doing that, and it's disrespectful, frankly, by not treating them as professionals. Any other professional, we would get the stakeholders involved. We would ask them how we should propose this. We do this all the time. We get the stakeholders, the people who know their job, who know their profession, to comment and to give us advice. And so for those reasons, I am proposing, I move, that we table this motion, this resolution, this ordinance, until a time when city staff can go back and actually have some conversations with licensed massage therapists and get their feedback on both fees and other issues that have been raised. Some of the commenters this evening raised issues. I know some of my fellow council members are saying, "Let's just separate these two things and cut the fees." But there were other issues that were raised tonight. And we need to go through this with a fine-tooth comb and let the people who know their business advise us on this. That's how professionals treat each other, and these people don't deserve any less.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Thank you very much. Your seconded motion was seconded by Members Hendricks.
I assume we can't have more comment, or is that it?
Yes, you can have comment.
Okay. I agree with Alderperson Ward on, yes, there is a profession. There's two distinctions, but also we have to make sure we understand, as we heard council talk about, there are certain legal ways you go about doing things. And it's not as simple as saying, "Well, we see this establishment. They're operating at this time, and this time they're doing this and this." We can't go in there and stop that. That's because we've known, if you've lived in this community, I've lived in this community a long time, you know locations that have been this way for over 10 years. But the problem is they can't close them down because of legalities or loopholes that are in there that doesn't allow those to be closed in the way that we would all think that should be closed. So the question, I want to make sure we're trying to decide here is, is this ordinance, as we're looking at these two, yes, I would propose to separate the two ordinances, have them two separate ones, and reduce the fees, yes. But the question is the wording. This is something I want to make sure everyone's very clear, no matter, you know, as Alderperson Ward said, is anybody in favor of sex trafficking? No. The thing is, is like, well, I'm not in favor of hurting legitimate businesses. The thing is, we have to look at it as it's not a slight. There are people, the wellness area is very important to this community. It's important to everybody, and I want to make sure we understand that everyone in this council believes that it's important. And there are certain things we're trying to navigate to make this happen and also to make sure things stay permanently closed. There's never a foolproof answer. The thing that saddens me is that we're talking about protecting women, majority are women, and that's the thing is I want to make sure we're doing. And I don't want this to be a thing that if we don't vote yes or no on this, we are not saying, "Well, we don't want to protect women." No, we do. This is so important. This is something beyond just our city, as our staff has talked about. So I look at this as something, as something that's not clear-cut, and I'm not even sure if we change the wording so it doesn't seem slanderous. I don't look as we're slandering the actual legitimate profession. And it's, the wording does sound awful. The massage parlor part of it is horrible. It is a horrible word to be referred to. And I know any profession, no matter what it is, they don't want to refer to something that's very negative. So I just want to state that before we go to vote and to move forward with this, because I think it's important to know that it's just a very complex, it's not a, we do this and this is gonna happen. I want to make sure that we, this does happen, but it needs to be, if we need to word it, then we need to word it differently.
Thank you. Other members with comment? Remember Mosley?
Yeah, I have more of a question versus a comment, and I appreciate both of your points. My question is, when it comes to the fees, and I do believe that there can be some language adjustments and cleanup. And when we think about passing an ordinance and having teeth to it, is there a requirement that there has to be these fees? Or if we can make those minimum, and we would still give you the ability to police these type of establishments that don't fit the mode, as well as clean up the context, right? I mean, some things that I heard, right? I believe in the ordinance, $100 for application fee and then 250 annually. If we remove that altogether, would that, and we pass an ordinance with clear context, would that give us the teeth and the backing that we would need to close those establishments?
Yeah, the fees can be set at whatever you want. Our lowest application fee for a license is $100. And in fact, before two meetings ago, it was 250, and we reassessed our staff time and brought you forth a change to move that 100. So this is 100, it's the lowest for any license that we have. The same for the annual fee is the lowest that we have as well, unless it's an individual or a device, those are lower. But you could set it at free, you could set it at $1. It doesn't matter to us. We just would like the ability to be empowered to do more.
And I'll just say this for us, right? The reason that I'm thinking of that, if we can get together on language, right? And even if we have the fee of $100 and we suspend the fee for legitimate businesses, we just want to get to the point, like you said, right? How do we close down those organizations that we know exist and be able to act on those immediately? And then we would get away from this problem.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It could, I would probably, I would suggest not determining legitimate and illegitimate with license. Just if you don't want to have a fee, don't have a fee associated to it. It's the staff time that's the loss, and I think the benefits to the community is there. So whatever you would suggest on that.
Member Kerns?
Yeah, yeah, I just had one thing that occurred to me when you were talking about that in terms of, there was something, there was language in there that was like, was more ambiguous about being able to charge for investigations. And so keeping that in there means that if we are trying to get at who we are looking into, we're not gonna look into the ones that, on paper, you know, like, they tick all the boxes, and so that it would give you, if we're worried about having money to cover these investigations or to be able to do the staff time, to, you know, that it would, the burden would fall on who's being investigated.
Yeah, and actually, what that speaks to is just the background check. So we have a company the city uses for HR and hiring. They use it for police and fire. Those are exact fees, that's why it's stated there per the city's contract. So it's not like if staff were investigating something, that going back on them. It's just the cost of the background check or the fingerprinting as the exact cost listed in our city contract.
We have a, I'll be very quick.
Member Hendricks?
I just wanted to speak to, you know, my reason for seconding as well, you know, and I appreciate everybody's comments, and I don't think I disagree with anybody, because again, this is an issue that I think we can all get behind pretty easily. But, you know, the reason for my seconding is the fact that I don't feel that stakeholders were a part of that process in the way that they should have been, because I think they, just as much as us, want to tackle this issue, and they've made that clear tonight. So I appreciate all the comments that have been said. And I would really like us to go back and maybe look at some of that state language as it lines up with ours and see if there's any gaps that maybe we missed. The other thing I want to say is I appreciate city staff for the work that they're doing to try to tackle this issue and remaining, you know, professional through this process is super important as well, because there was no ill will, I don't believe, in any of this process. And I think the city manager said it really well. Blinders on fixing an issue, forgetting maybe some of the other stuff around it. And that's okay, and that's when we can take a moment to pause like this and come back.
Thank you. We've got a motion on the floor, which has been seconded, sorry?
I was just gonna say, could we just, for two seconds, give Councilmember Motney a chance?
Yes. I'm sorry, Councilmember Motney, any comments?
Thank you. Yes, please. First of all, just thinking about the question that was asked, is anyone here for sex trafficking or human trafficking? And while there may not be anyone in the room there who answers that question in the affirmative, there are people here in our community who do support sex trafficking by their very actions in engaging with these businesses. And we've heard people talk about that tonight, and I think some of the most heartbreaking comments was to hearing from those who are licensed health professionals in this field who have also felt threatened and seen aggressors toward them as well. This matter is very significant, and I am concerned that we have a motion to table without a date certain. And I ask for consideration to have a date certain for June the 23rd. We have already waited two weeks from the original date this item was going to be presented to the council. This ordinance language is in place in several communities across the state, and they have been able to make a significant difference in their communities through enforcement by virtue of this change. And I hope we will do the same.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion on the floor.
I would be willing to amend that motion to a date certain, assuming that we're not already busy that night talking about the missing middle issue? Is that, does anybody know if that's gonna take up time that night?
Not on June 23rd, no, I don't think so.
So right now, we're gonna go back to the motion on the floor. And, Member Ward, do you want to repeat your motion, please? And it's been seconded by Member Hendricks. Chris?
I'm just gonna say that if the movement decides to amend her motion, she could do that and then seek a second of the amended motion, if that's what her choice is.
That would be my choice.
Okay.
Perfect.
I would do the same and echo in sentiment. I would do the same and echo in sentiment Alder Member Ward's comments on setting certain dates.
Thank you.
Okay. So we can go ahead and vote?
May I get some... Madam Clerk, can you take the record here?
Oh, clarification on the motion. So the motion was to postpone until June 23rd meeting to allow additional feedback from licensed professionals in the massage therapy area.
And to move, to get feedback on splitting this...
Into, into two, okay.
Yes.
Into two. Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Motney, how would you like to vote?
I would vote no on this. The thought of two more weeks of knowing that we are complicit in this going on in your, on our community, I I just can't abide by that. My vote is no.
Okay, thank you. All right, we just have two noes to, or nays to announce, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Motney.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, then, for the record, can you explain to the audience also that that will motion go back?
Yeah, so this item will be moved to the June 23rd meeting. We'll separate it into two ordinances, and we will work with licensed massage therapists in the area to provide feedback.
Thank you very much. Any other members with comments regarding what was done? Okay, thank you. And I think that there's, is not city manager's discussion?
I have no report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other members from the council that would like to have a report or comments?
I just wanted to comment. Alder Person Scott wanted to make it known that she couldn't be here tonight because she is overseas for one of her children's graduations, but she will definitely catch up on on what we discussed when she returns.
Thank you. So then we'll move to the mayor's discussion, and briefly, in capping, recapping, I should say, back to probably the middle of the week on June the 4th, myself and Member Hendricks hosted a reception for downtown business owners and those other individuals that have vested interest in downtown. We not only thanked them for their appreciation or appreciation for all their work and what they do in downtown, but for being downtown. And we had a cross-section of renters, business owners, business renters, people who called downtown home, and so I think it was warmly received, and there was no tax dollars involved in it. So with that, I think it was a good start with some updates that came from our city manager and from others that were there in regarding to the downtown project. Also then into the after, into the weekend, there was an outdoor concert at the Bloomington Center Performing Arts to kick off the weekend. There was a bruise at the zoo. There was a number of other activities within the downtown area and within Bloomington with other private businesses. It was a very, very busy, busy weekend with lots of things to do for many of those who are in town and call Bloomington home or came to visit, hopefully, so enjoyed themselves, I hope. If there's not any other comments from members of the council, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much, each and every one of you for being here. Thank you. And my motion I need...
I'll move.
And second it. Thank you.
I seconded. I...